I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Welcome everyone, I should say one. Because you're an hour, I think you're an hour early. I think you're an hour, you're an hour early. All right, well welcome to tonight's special meeting, the Casa Grande City Council. And I'll call the meeting in order. I'll let the roll call show that everyone's here except Mr. Powell. Does anybody know where Mr. Powell is? Do we want to excuse him? Should we call him?
Yeah, maybe just call him really quick.
Call him real quick, see if he's gonna make it. Maybe he's sitting up in the conference room. Oh, you mean his voice, voice mailbox. Will you call him or is Larry calling him? Are both of you calling him? Is he here?
He's pointing.
Okay, well, I think we're in a... If I see him, we'll just say he's here.
Okay.
We can temporarily excuse him.
Yeah, sing, sing us one chorus. There he is.
Okay, Mr. Powell's here. So, we're actually gonna go into executive session, so if I can have somebody make a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion is second to go into executive session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that an aye from you, Mr. Powell?
That's an aye from me.
All right, so we're in executive session. So now you get to sit here by yourself.
Motion and a second to come out of executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're out of executive session. We'll stand adjourned for about six, seven minutes. We'll start at seven o'clock. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Casa Grande. And welcome, everyone. We'll call tonight's meeting to order, and the first couple items on our agenda are the invocation, our pledge of allegiance. And I'd ask you to please remain standing for both. And we have tonight with us Bishop Scott Buckner from the LDS Church to lead us in our invocation. So Scott, please.
Yes, sir. Our Father who art in heaven, we thank thee for this opportunity that we have to be at this high council meeting. We thank thee for our great nation, and for the blessings and the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank thee for our state and local officials in government, and ask a special blessing be upon them, that they may be inspired and know what to do in order to speak on our behalf and do what is best for our community. We thank thee for the first responders, and we ask that thou may protect them, especially here in our city. That as they protect us, we ask that thou may be with them and keep them from harm. We thank thee for our community and the members of our great city. We ask thee that we may be able to support our local officials as they speak for us. At this time, we ask a special blessing be upon us in this meeting, that we can discuss the items on the agenda, and within the spirit of brotherhood, come to a good consensus of what is on there. In this, we pray in the name of thy son, even Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
Sir noted.
As far as our minutes, we just have one to do tonight, and that's, we need to approve the city council regular meeting minutes from November 15th, 2021 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next are our claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept.
Hold on. Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims date of November 10th to 30th, 2021 as presented.
Second.
Our motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Tonight's meeting agenda. Larry, do we have any changes?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Any changes from the council?
None.
Okay. Seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll take it a second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved. All, the next item is item G, which is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone would like to remove anything off of the consent agenda from the council? Anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I move approval as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is item H, which is our public comments section. So I'm going to open the floor to public comments. I would ask if you would like to address the council. Please remember that this, these items are not on our agenda, so we cannot discuss them, but we will certainly listen. And if there is some action needed, we'll direct staff to follow up on that particular item. I would also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and state your name and your address when you approach. I do have a speaker card here from Mr., from actually our legislator, from District Eight, Mr. Neil Carter. Hi, Neil. Newly, 30 days.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is my 30th day. Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members and guests. As many of you know, the late Representative Frank Pratt passed from this life to the eternal in late September. May God rest his soul. And the Penala County Board of Supervisors convened in late October to select me as the replacement for his term. So I was sworn into office on the 5th of November, which makes this just about beginning of the second month. But I'm on a bit of a speaking, or rather, a listening, I'm sorry, I'm rather, bit of a listening tour to introduce myself to the public as well as to yourselves. It's my firm intention to represent the entire district, although I live in Santan Valley. Our district is the size of Connecticut. It extends from Casa Grande to Globe. And so I'm just here to make myself available to hear your concerns, also to read my contact information into the record. And that's really sort of it. I consider the position a position of sacred trust, and so honestly, I just want to make sure I do the best job that I can for you, because I work for you. So you can always reach me at 480-628-1037. I can give you cards if you want a card. The usual legislative email- The usual legislative email is first initial last name, so in my case it would be n.carter@azlodge.gov. And if you have any questions or concerns, I'm always available.
Neil, if you wanted to give the council members your card, I think that would be appropriate. Please. And congratulations, and good luck to you. We will be calling on you.
I like to speak with prayers for better.
Thank you.
We're good at praying.
I know where to find you.
But ink, don't smudge the ink.
I can, I can airdrop it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. All right, I have another speaker card. Omar Abidal, would you rather speak on the subject, which is a public hearing, or speak at this particular time?
I think I mean, I meant that for, uh, public hearing.
Public hearing, okay, okay. All right, that's not a problem. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? This is your opportunity. All right, seeing nobody jump up, then we will move on to the next item. I'll close the public hearing, or public hearing, public comments, and we'll move on to a word of contracts. First one is I-1.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with SCE Engineering to provide construction contract administration in an amount not to exceed $393,380. The, um, the contract is to provide oversight and inspection for the Thornton Road project. The segment of Thornton Road that we are doing in Phase One is from Peters Road South to Selma Highway, and we had three firms that submitted their qualifications, and the selection committee ranked those and chose Schlesinger as the, the most qualified firm for this job. So the project, um, excuse me, the project is part of the Thornton Road widening project. It will be to widen Thornton Road to four lanes in each direction, including turn lanes at each of the intersections that exist out there today. It will also be to expand the Peters intersection and construct the, the permanent signal at that intersection, as well as construct a, a sewer line along the Peters Road alignment from about Tractor Supply through that intersection for service to the east of that intersection. We did budget 8.95, uh, eight, uh, excuse me, $8,950,000 for this project in our budget this year, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council members have any questions? Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no questions, then I will call for a resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5360, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Schlesinger Consulting Engineering, PLLC, DBA, SCE Engineering, to provide construction contract administration services for the Thornton, Thornton Road improvements for Selma Highway to Peters Road project, authorizing expenditure funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5360 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, and the next item is item K-1, and this is regarding the, consider the election of the mayor pro tem. Every year, we have a new mayor pro tem or a vice mayor that is elected by the council, and so this is that time of year when we go through that process. So are there any nominations from the council?
Mayor McFarland, I would nominate Dick Powell for mayor pro tem.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hope not, but congratulations, Mr. Powell. And, and I want to also thank our past mayor pro tem, Mr. Bob Hulston. In fact, Bob, you would, we actually need to swing in first. You want to do that first? Let's do the swing in. You need to go down there.
Okay. He used to get sworn in.
And then we'll go down.
Okay. Next.
Do solemnly share that I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the law of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear to faith.
That I will bear to faith.
And that we use to the same.
And that we use to the same.
And defend it against all enemies.
And defend it against all enemies.
Or, yes, and that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Disarrested in the, of Mayor Pro Tem.
Of Mayor Pro Tem.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Let me get your picture.
So we, we, uh, we kind of rotate through the mayor pro tem and give everybody an opportunity to, to, uh, to hold that position. And so this past year, Bob's done a really amazing job helping me out and being, in fact, he also sits on the CAG board for me. He, he also has, has filled in a lot of, some, not a lot, but several ribbon cutting ceremonies. As many as we've had this last year, it's been a lot, and so sometimes those, those jobs need to be kind of shared, and he's done an amazing job. So Bob, I want to thank you, number one, and, and basically, this is just an appreciation for his dedication and service as the Casa Grande City Mayor Pro Tem from December 7, 2020 to December 6 of 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
No, no.
All right, well, congratulations, Mr. Powell, and, and thank you, Bob, for, for really everything that you did this last year.
Thank you.
All right, I think the next item on our agenda is L, or the L-1 and L-2, and, uh, Paul, I was looking at these, and I was wondering if we could maybe combine some of these, so we can kind of combine the ones that are together, and then we'll vote separately on each item, but we can, we can address the general plan amendment and also the zoning changes, because it's the same piece of property, right?
Yes, that, that'll work well, Mayor. Staff is prepared to present that way.
Okay, perfect, then let's, let's start with L-1 and L-2.
If I could, I just want to remind you that while staff can do a single presentation, you are going to want to have separate public hearings for the general plan, and then vote on that prior to moving to the zone.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the reminder, because I probably would have forgot. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Stole my thunder on that first one. I was going to start by saying that.
Sorry.
The first one is the Cactus Mine. The first is a general plan amendment. Rose Law Group's requesting a major general plan amendment from the commerce and business and neighborhoods land use category to the manufacturing industry land use category for approximately 2,160 acres, generally located south of Val Vista between Burris and Corales Road, and you can see a map of the proposed area on the slide. This is actually the general plan layout from them. You see the yellow is the neighborhoods, blue is our commerce and business area, the purple is the manufacturing and industry area, and so the request is to change this area into manufacturing and industry. The proposed amendment seeks to change the land use map designation of the subject property to potentially reopen and expand the mining operations of the site. The area is being amended, uh, the area being amended is located within the city. However, the existing mines located in the unincorporated area of the county and is outside the city limits. The applicant is concurrently processing a zone change to the planned area development that details the potential uses and development standards of the expanded area, and we'll get into that a little bit more further in this presentation. One other item that we want to cover on the overview is that the proposed land use expansion for the mine does impact the alignment of Bianco, McCartney, and Val Vista Boulevard. The city will look at addressing the transportation network in the area with any future request. Furthermore, staff is actively studying the transportation network in and around the mine in conjunction with other developments in the area to identify the most logical routing of the transportation network. You can see it highlighted here is where the mine's located, and you'll see how it affects those three roads. When looking at the review criteria for the major general plan amendment, we have seven review criteria. Number one expands that review criteria by introducing the 11 general plan guiding principles. Staff reviewed all of the review criteria and finds that this general plan request is in conformance with that. In regards to notification for the general plan, we did meet all required city requirements for that, including a 60-day review period for the county planning agency, abutting municipalities, the Arizona Commerce Authority, and ADWR. We did get one inquiry regarding this, but no comments, it was just looking for more information. Now we're going to move into the planned area development part. So Rose Law Group is requesting a PAD zone change from the Copper Mountain Ranch PAD to the Cactus Mine PAD for that exist, that same area. As discussed, the Arizona Sonoran Copper Company is working to reopen the Cactus Mine. To accomplish this, they're seeking to rezone the property to the PAD. The purpose of the request is to provide for potential mining activities, buffer areas, and view shed berms intended to limit views and impacts from the mine. In the overview, you can see on the left is the permitted land uses. They're all associated with mining activities. In the land use plan provided in the PAD, primarily what you'll see is a view shed berm, which is a 100-foot tall landscaped berm, to mitigate any visual impact from the rock storage area. You can see highlighted in yellow is that view shed berm, and then this is the natural rock storage area, and we'll cover that a little bit more further in this presentation. In looking at the review criteria, we look at the following criteria. All have been covered in your staff report within your packet. Tonight, we're just going to concentrate on two of them. The first one is the relationship with the plan elements to conditions both on and off the property. You can see images of the open pit mine. The second image is a leach pad, and the third is a rock storage. So staff and the applicant work to make sure we mitigate any impacts from abutting properties from these type of uses. So we did have them amend the setbacks to 1,000 feet from any residentially zoned property and 200 feet from all other zone districts. Those setbacks can be modified if they build a berm similar to the one that they're proposing on the east side, equal to or greater than the height of that water, of the leach pad or the waste rock storage. It must also utilize a three-to-one slope, and the berm must be vegetated to look natural. In regards to open space, Arizona Sonoran will provide a regional trail dedication along its northern boundary abutting at Val Vista. You can see that highlighted in blue. They will also be constructing a portion of the city, uh, city's regional trail through the northern and eastern portions of the site. You can see that highlighted in the red, and then they'll also be providing any dedication that is required for any future road alignments that abut the property. That would include like Corales or Val Vista primarily. In regards to notifications, staff matter exceeded all requirements. We did receive two inquiries. One was general questions. One, we did receive a question in regards to blasting and mining activities. We referred them to the Arizona Sonoran contact, and they, I believe they followed up with them, and we can confirm that with the applicant. If approved by city council, the next steps would be to complete the map of dedications. Then a major site plan to do any projects on the site would be reviewed and approved by planning commission, and then that would be followed by site development plans and building plans and final landscape plans. In conclusion, planning commission on a six-oh vote recommends city council approve DSA 2100150, a major general plan amendment and its associated resolution to change the land use category from commerce and business and neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry. Do we want to stop there, Brett, or do the second recommendation?
I think you can give the recommendation, but we are going to have separate public hearings and opportunity for people to comment on the items separately.
Sure. So planning commission on a six-oh vote recommends city council approve DSA 2100191 of zone change from the Copper Mountain Ranch planned area development to the Cactus Mine planned area development with the conditions as stated in the ordinance.
And Joe, the conditions that are in the ordinance, or do they include the path, the walk, the bike path or the walking path, the trail?
Uh, that was actually implemented into the zoning, so it does include the dedication of any right-of-way.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
I was going to follow up on the trail. There's a lot of equestrian riding out in that area. Are they able to use that trail?
Yeah, it's, it's based on the city, uh, the city's regional master plan, and I do believe that it has a, has both walking path, concrete, and then I think it also has the, the DG gravel trail, but I, I can confirm that if you, if you'd like to follow up on that.
Yeah, it would be open for equestrian riding.
Yeah, it's based on the city's master plan for, for that site, and I can get you that trail cross-section.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions from the council? Then I'll open the floor up on the first item, which is L-1. All right, seeing none, then I will, uh, this is a public hearing, and this will be for L-1, which is the amending the city Casa Grande general, 2030 general plan. Is there, I know that Omar, you're here for L-1 and L-2, so you want to speak now or speak on both, or since you did sign up for both?
Yeah, speak on both.
Okay, L, then your opportunity is now. And right now, we're on L-1, which is the amendment to the 2030 general plan.
Got it. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Omar Abdallah. I'm an attorney at Rose Law Group, 7144 East Stetson Drive in Scottsdale. I'm here on behalf of Arizona Sonoran Copper Company, and we're so excited to present this proposal to you that we truly believe will be a massive economic driver for the city of Casa Grande. I want to thank Joe for his comprehensive presentation. I do have a presentation with me. However, in the interest of time, I will, you know, just be here available to answer any questions if you have them, both for this agenda item and also for the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Powell? He has a question.
I know one of the, the people with the satellites call that the eye in the sky for Casa Grande, because they can see it so well from above. Miscellaneous information.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Omar?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just want to think them as getting together with
I just want to thank them as getting together with the developers, well, to be proactive about getting this berm built to prevent any future conflicts that may arise with residential. So we like to see that. So thank you guys very much, and it looks like a nice plan in incorporating our trail system, too, is really, really great. So thanks for being proactive on this one.
Sure. Thank you, council member. And Arizona Sonoran has been trying to be proactive in doing that. They are wanting to be a good partner for the city, and so we know that there isn't any, you know, immediately adjacent residential currently, but there might be in the future, and so we're conscious of that, and we've been working with your staff in putting something nice together.
Great. Thank you, Omar.
Thank you.
All right, any other, or anyone else who would like to comment on L1? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing on L1 and call for, unless there are any other questions from the council. All right, then I will call for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5273.1, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande 2030 general plan adopted by resolution number 5273 by changing the land use designations from commerce and business and neighborhoods to manufacturing slash industry on property generally located south of Val Vista Boulevard between Burris Road and Corales Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Go ahead.
Mayor McFarland, I'd like to move approval of resolution number 5273.1 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Next item is L2. Does the council have any more questions on L2? This is the zoning change.
Just a clarification I needed regarding the blasting. It was mentioned that there was a citizen that I just want to-
We'll call him back up, and we'll ask him.
Okay. Sorry. Just a clarification if they were contacted.
He just officially opened the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Let me open the public hearing. Omar?
Yes, they were contacted.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what was the answer? I know there's some, I know there's some mine people here, so I know you guys can answer this question. Adam?
Mayor members of the council, good evening. Adam Hawkins for the record. The gentleman was referred to us. I actually talked to him myself. He lives in the Avalon community. We talked a little bit about it. He had some previous understanding about where things were before, and we talked about the difference in blasting technology between then and today. But in addition, the one thing that I want to reassure everyone here is that we're in the process of commissioning a noise and vibration study, so we can get a pretty good idea about what this is. And obviously, as you've seen with the view shed berm, the intention is to, like, pretty much make it so no one knows we're doing anything. We realize we're not going to, probably not going to get to exactly zero on that, but we want to get it as close to the source as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling your back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item L2? All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and call for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.414, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning for Copper Mountain Ranch Planned Area Development, PAD, to Cactus Mine Planned Area Development, PAD, on property generally located south of Val Vista Boulevard between Burris Road and Corales Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.414 as presented.
Second.
I already have a motion in two seconds. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes, and I want to thank the Sonoran, Arizona Sonoran mine folks for being here tonight, and the, I know we had a nice article in the paper on terms of the economic impact. Just wanted to kind of publicly thank you guys. I think it's, it could be a really big deal for the city of Casa Grande. It's like, I understand, like a Super Bowl every two years, so let's hope that comes to fruition. So, thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to item L3, and we're going to combine this, too?
Yeah, L3, L4, and L5 are all part of a master.
Okay, great. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, this is for the Santa Cruz Village. It'll be a minor general plan amendment, a zone change to R2, and a zone change to PAD. The first one is going to be the minor general plan amendment. Just a quick overview of the site. The entire site of Santa Cruz Village is shown here. It's south of Rodeo Park, west of Panal, south of Rodeo. First request is to amend the general plan from commerce and business to neighborhoods for 19 acres. This request is simply to accommodate the proposed single-family residential product that you'll hear later. You can see the site area that's being amended. In looking at the review criteria, again, we cover these seven criteria. Again, number one expands that into the general plan guiding principles, the 11 guiding principles. Staff reviewed all of the principles and the review criteria and found that the general plan amendment request is in conformance. The next item is the zone change to R2. The application is requesting a zone change for approximately 134 acres from the existing Santa Cruz Village PAD to R2 multifamily residential zoning. You can see the site highlighted in red and the change that's In looking at the zone change to R2, the R2 zone allows for single-family homes on 5,000-square-foot lots, 45-foot wide and 90 feet deep, and it has five-foot side yard setbacks. By comparison, by comparison, the existing PAD would require lots to be no smaller than 6,000 square feet with a lot width of 55 feet. For every lot less than 7,000 square feet, there should be an equal number of lots greater than 8,000 square feet, and the setbacks are 10 on one side and five on the other. It is this flexibility and the ability to increase the number of certificate of assured water supply that is prompting this request. The benefit of the PAD zone is that it is subject to design standards establishing architectural standards and physical layout considerations such as landscaping, open space, walls. Therefore, staff has recommended certain conditions of record for the zone change to ensure that we're getting a quality design and product provided with this request. You can see down below, the existing PAD had lots at 6,000, 50 square feet, 7,000 square feet, and 8,000 square feet, and lot widths of 55, 60, and 70, and we had 387 homes ending up with a 2.8 DU per acre. The proposed R2 request, this also was heard with a pre-plat at Planning Commission hearing. The final plat's not prepared yet, but you guys will see that in the future. The pre-plat had lots at 5175 square feet and 6,000 square feet with 45-foot lot width and 50-foot lot width, and they are increasing the density to 3.6 DU's per acre and proposing 486 homes. As a condition of record to make sure we're staying compatible with our general plan requirements, no more than 603 dwelling units may be constructed, which is the maximum density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. In looking at the open space, the R2 does require 10% open space. The PAD requires 15% open space. This was the first item heard on the Planning Commission agenda last month, and following this item, we had four other requests for R2 zoning. Those four other requests were imposed with a 20% recommendation of open space from the Planning Commission. So with that said, staff is recommending that 20% be put onto this one as well. We did confer with the applicant. They're okay with it. Within that pre-plat, they were providing 30% open space anyway. So to cover that a little bit more, you can see the dashed lines in the, in the plan shown are sidewalks. The purple and blue are sidewalks. The red dashed lines are trails throughout the area. They do have a part of our trail being constructed, a regional master plan trail on the north side of that wash with five connections to it if you include the sidewalk. You can also see that they've got five pocket parks within the neighborhood that are all accessible by the homes. There's a simple design layout of what was provided with the pre-plat next to it, and then you can see some of the amenities that they're proposing potentially with those parks. So when looking at the review criteria, we make sure it's consistent with the general plan. Staff reviewed all of that, and it does conform to all the general plan requirements. Additionally, the state requires that before adopting any zoning ordinance or amendment of the general applicability, the city shall consider the impact on the cost to construct housing. Because the properties were previously zoned PAD, the conditions being imposed do not appear to negatively impact the cost of producing housing. Furthermore, the addition of lots could make for better economies of scale, which may actually reduce the net cost to the owners developing the property. The final request was for a zone change to PAD. The third submittal is a request to amend 24 acres approximately to be zoned PAD. The request is intended to accommodate 19.1-acre built-to-rent development with a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre and a 5.7-acre commercial development site to be located on the southwest corner of Rodeo and Panal. You can, excuse me, you can see the site in the northeast corner of the project. This is a conceptual diagram of what they're proposing. It's commercial pad sites out in front, and then you go into the single-family for rent, and then into the single-family homes, which provides a nice transition from Panal and Rodeo into the, into the neighborhood. In looking at the review criteria, we look at the following criteria. We're just going to cover the one criteria tonight, and that's its conformance to the city's zoning ordinance. The proposed PAD provides two primary land uses. The first is the built-to-rent product, and the second is the commercial uses. The built-to-rent portion of the submittal has been created utilizing our recently updated 2020, or 2021 residential design standards for planned area developments, and the commercial area is utilizing our general business B2 zoning. So staff will ensure all design standards are met at the time of future major site plan submittals. In regards to notification for these items, we matter exceeded all city requirements. We got no comments on this particular request. The next step, if the R2 is approved by city council and the general plan amendment, council will consider the final plat, and then it will be followed by site development plans and building plans. An HOA or special maintenance district will be, at the discretion of the city, would require a formation at the time of the final plat, and then housing product submittal will be considered administratively by staff. And then if the PAD is approved by city council, major site plan review and approval by Planning Commission, followed by your construction permits and documents. In conclusion, staff, Planning Commission on a 5-1 vote recommends city council approve DSA 2100165, a minor general plan amendment, and its associated resolution for approximately 19 acres of land from the commerce and business land use category to the neighborhoods land use category. Second, Planning Commission on a 5-1 vote recommends city council approve DSA 2100166, a zone change for approximately 127 acres of land from PAD to R2 multifamily residential with the conditions as stated in the ordinance. And finally, Planning Commission on a six-oh vote recommends city council approve DSA 2100167, a zone change for around 24 acres of land from PAD to PAD with the condition as stated in the ordinance. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Lavender?
Joe, with the close proximity to the wash, are they going to have to raise the elevation similar to what they did in Mission Valley to keep it out of a flood zone?
They will. They've already, they would have to do a CLOMAR and LOMAR to do, to get to the final plat stage. It's a requirement that we put on it in review with that final plat, and they've completed the CLOMAR, so they'd have to just finalize the LOMAR, which is a floodplain mediation. So you can kind of see, the floodplain goes much farther north than what this graphic shows. That, what the graphic is showing is where the LOMAR will alleviate all those restrictions on building those homes on a higher elevation.
How much do they have to raise them?
I don't know. Typically, if you're in a floodplain, in the 100-year, you have to raise it 12 inches for the final floor elevation. However, when you do the CLOMAR and LOMAR, it mitigates where that flood zone impacts those properties. So where you're seeing here, they would not have to raise those lots any further.
But there won't be an ugly hole like there is in Mission Valley?
So actually, probably on the final design will involve excavating the Santa Cruz Channel a bit to increase the carrying capacity or the holding capacity. There'll probably be actually like a retention basin that parallels the channel. So I don't think there's going to be as much actual elevation raised. There'll be some, but more an excavation along, parallel to the channel to increase the, the holding capacity of the, of the floodway. You know, under the LOMAR/CLOMAR process, you're not allowed to, whatever activity you undertake, you're not allowed to increase the flooding of any other properties downstream. So it will, all the modification will take place on this site, but there's not going to be much raising of the, of the building plaids, really.
Thank you.
In terms of that, the trail, their plan is to, is to work with us on our trail system and kind of match those, those plans?
Yeah, it'll be required to match the city's trail master plan, and you'll also see another project next, I believe, on the other side of Panal that's also proposing a trail in that area. So the challenge is going to be connecting those two, so we have-
Getting across Panal also.
Yeah, getting across.
So, because our plan is, because we're at Treacle now, and one of the plans is to obviously connect that section that we're completing right now, obviously back over to Dave White, which would be amazing, and a good section for us to complete, I think. Anyway, I just want to make sure we're kind of following that plan and we're actually see that come to fruition. So that'd be amazing.
Yeah, the next presentation, we'll also clarify some of that a little bit better, too.
All right.
So.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Matt?
We got one question, one question on the single, the single-family rental portion. Is that gated, like the other ones we've been seeing?
Yeah, we don't have the major site plan as yet, but it is planned to be gated. And what you're seeing is probably really-
Conceptual.
Accurate, but conceptual drawing, so we still, we'll still need to look at that further with the major site plan submittal.
Anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Powell?
That area is right across from the rodeo grounds, and there's a lot of traffic there, a lot of parking. I don't know if that's going to bother-
I don't know if that's going to bother people that live that close to it or not. But the, on the corner there, that's always been something that they wanted to dress up, and the only way you can get in there is a stoplight. On rodeo roads, the only way you can enter into that area. But the rest of this is going to be the R2?
That's correct. So as you can see on the screen, the R2 is just kind of the lotting that's laid out there with the single-family for rent to the northeast, and then the farthest northeast corner is the commercial piece. So the R2 is probably closest to the actual rodeo grounds. There is going to be, you know, perimeter landscaping in there, and those will be rear yards. There will be full rodeo half-street improvements along there, so it's a little bit separated from that use. And actually, you know, a lot of that might be considered an amenity to these people because the rodeo park sees a lot of activity, but it also can provide a lot of activity for these residents, so.
Well, yeah, there's carnivals that'll take places right across the street from where they are there.
The baseball diamonds.
Well, and the baseball diamonds are further north.
Yeah, you know, personally, I see it as an amenity rather than a hindrance, but again, you can kind of choose where you want to, if you want to buy a lot there or not, but it's probably a beneficial.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions?
There's going to be some commercial right there on the highway, right?
Yeah, Panal, the top Panal corner where you see those kind of maroon-looking buildings on the site plan is a commercial pad.
Corner.
Yeah.
Bob?
I can't really tell from this picture, but the entrance-exit onto Panal Avenue, is that still within the divided section of Panal Avenue where the lanes are divided?
No, it's not now.
I think it's far enough, and we did have ADOT review this. ADOT controls that area. It's far enough from rodeo to where they can have full access at that location.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is probably right where the Circle K is, right there.
Let's see, is this rodeo?
This is rodeo up here.
Yeah. Rodeo Road, they're just on the corner, just kind of across from these guys. But the...
All right, any other more questions?
I'm just, I get to be concerned about too much E2. And I hope it's something that would fit nicely in there because everything around this now has been pretty well sophisticated and planned out. And I guess we just have to wait and see. But as I say, you have one way in or out, and that's the only way to get in and out of there is rodeo road at the stoplight.
No, they have another entrance here off of Panal, right here.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
Get out there every day.
No.
Into this development. He's talking about the rodeo access, and you're talking about the housing access.
Well, I'm talking about this. We're talking about this. We're talking about rodeo grounds. Okay. Anyway. Any other questions? All right, then I'm going to open the public hearing, and we'll open the L3 public hearing considering the minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande 2030 general plan. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this subject? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5273.2. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande 2030 general plan as adopted by resolution number 5273 and as previously amended by changing the land use designation from commerce and business to neighborhoods for approximately 19 acres of property generally located near the southwest corner of Panal Avenue and Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5273.2 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, next item is L4. And are there any questions to staff from the council? I did have one, just one, it's kind of across all of this. So if we, if this gets approved, and this is just a kind of a mock-up, are they held to the bigger lots in the bottom and the smaller lots on the top? Is that, or couldn't this be changed?
So at the current time, the pre-plat's been approved. So they could move into the final plat, and that would be, you guys would see that, and it would match what you see here. Now, that doesn't mean that that plat, the pre-plat, can't be redone into a different configuration. But again, that would go to Planning Commission and then final plat to council, so you will get to see this item again as far as the residential.
Because this is a little mix. It's not all 5,000-foot lots, right? So there's
Yeah, there's a range of lot sizes from 5,200 to 6,000 for here. The lighter colored ones are 6,000-square-foot lots.
The ones in the back are a little bigger. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. All right, then I'll open the public hearing for L4. Is there anyone from the audience? Yes, sir. State your name and give us your address.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Kyle Barcello with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, located at 120 South Ash Avenue in Tempe, Arizona. We are the applicant on behalf of Mr. Deacon, who is the landowner. He's owned this property for quite a long time, 37 years. He told me that it was a short-term investment, and it's showing its age a little bit, but we are very excited to be here tonight. We think that we made a lot of good improvements to the already existing approved Santa Cruz Village PAD, and with that, I would just like to make myself available to answer any questions the council may have regarding any of the logistics of the PAD itself, lot sizes, the layout, you name it. And for the record, we have no intentions of changing the pre-plat. What you see is what you're getting. Thank you.
I do have a question. Is there any plan to actually build and develop it? Or is this just to set it up to try and sell it?
Mayor, council, that's a very timely question because the property owner has received a letter of intent on this property. Not a lot of details are known at this time, but there has been high interest in this property for the recommending lot sizes that you see in front of you tonight.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Great, thank you.
Mayor, I just have a comment. You know, it's so nice, you know, we've had discussions about having housing options in the community, so I want to thank you for bringing something like this. And I know, you know, some of the lots are a little bit smaller, but again, these are housing options. So not everyone, you know, this might not fit the needs of every individual, but, you know, we need more with all these jobs coming and, you know, our community growing. We see so many people heading out of town because they don't have a place to live, you know, that's affordable here. So I'm happy to see the different options even in this area, and I know we're going to be approving a couple more this evening, but no, I think it's great, and I appreciate you bringing something like this. We need it.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on L4 and call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.175.1. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located at the southwest corner of Panal Avenue and Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
All right.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.175.1. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, the next item is L5. Again, a public hearing. If there are no questions from the council on this, I'll open the public hearing to the public. Again, if you would like to address the council on item L5, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.175.2. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from an existing planned area development to a new, smaller planned area development on property generally located at the southwest corner of Panal Avenue and Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.175.2 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, we move to item L6. This is also a public hearing, and this is Consider Ordinance Number 1178.209.2, changing zoning from planned area development PAD to R2. Mr. Gagliardi, are you taking over? No.
This will be Jaclyn.
Ah, Jaclyn. Okay.
All right, the next item on the agenda is for Lane Farms, a request by CVL for a zone change from the Lane Farms planned area development to R2 on approximately 224 acres. So the current PAD is for 531 lots with a density of 2.33 dwelling units per acre. The proposed R2 is for 711 lots with a density of 3.1, excuse me, 3.1, 3.17 dwelling units per acre. And the remaining PAD for multifamily and commercial on approximately 33 acres at the northwest corner of Cortson and Panal is to remain as a PAD. So regarding the PAD to R2, as Joe mentioned previously, this is to, from the, to allow for flexibility and ability to increase the number of lots because of the, to increase the number of certified assured water that is driving this. And while this request is to increase the number of lots, staff does want to ensure that the resulting development has the same design elements and quality of a traditional PAD. And for that reason, staff does recommend conditions of approval relating to design requirements. As previously mentioned, the R2 open space requirement is 10%. The current PAD standards is 15%, and at the November Planning Commission recommended an increase to 20% for open space. And we are also adding that no more than 1,009 dwelling units may be constructed, and that will allow for the max density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. However, I do want to mention again that proposed development is for 3.17 dwelling units and 711 homes, and the proposed pre-plat that is currently in review has a range from 5,400 square feet to 6,000 square feet. A little bit more on the open space. The current plan is to have, or it's currently proposing 36% open space, and within the open space tracts of the community is already at 20% as well. They are proposing a trail along the Santa Cruz as well as spur trails running north and south connecting to the linear trail. In regards to zone change review criteria, staff reviewed the general plan. The analysis is provided in more detail in the attached staff report, and staff finds that it meets all the requirements. In addition, the new state law requires staff to consider impacts on affordable housing, and while staff did consider this, while this does impose a greater requirement than the traditional R2 zoning, because the previous zoning was a planned area development, the conditions imposed do not negatively impact the cost of housing. Regarding notification, public hearing efforts met or exceeded requirements set out in the code. Since the Planning Commission, I did receive one inquiry regarding the project, but no comments were received other than just wanting additional information. Regarding next steps, if the zone change is approved by City Council, Planning Commission will hear the preliminary plat at an upcoming scheduled meeting. After that, site development and final relation of the Lomar will be required prior to final plat approval. Council would consider the final plat at a later date. In addition, the HOA or special district, maintenance district will be determined by the city, and the housing product submittal will be considered administratively as well. So with that, Planning Commission recommended a favorable recommendation to City Council to approve DSA 2100184, zone change from the Lane Farms PAD R2 with conditions of record as described in the ordinance.
Council have any questions for staff? Bob?
If you could go back to the slide that shows the trail system?
Yeah, there you go.
Is there a plan on that east end? It seems to dead-end at the mobile home park there.
Yes, the preliminary plat will show this in better detail. This is just an exhibit highlighting this area.
So is there a plan, is there a plan to get it back over? Because the R park is right up there, right where the trail plan is there.
So actually, what's going to happen is that trail's going to turn north right at the west end of that manufactured home park. It's not going to extend as far east as it's shown here. It'll turn to go north and go right up to the Santa Cruz, and then go east along the north boundary of that manufactured home park.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we'll figure out how to hook it up to the other one that's on the other side of Panal?
Yes, that's going to be the challenge.
Okay.
You have to run fast.
It might be, it might be a $2 million bridge.
Equestrian.
Yeah, or a hawksing though, or something like that, sure.
Don't hurt my horse.
Zip line.
A zip line, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open this item L6 to the public. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to council on this item, again, it's item L6. Please give us your name and your address.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Julie Vermillion with the applicant CVL Consultants, located at 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix. I'd like to thank you for hearing our case tonight, and thank you, Jaclyn, for your presentation. I just wanted to point out that this, these rezoning effort is on behalf of the homebuilder, LGI Homes, who intends to develop this property. I just wanted to bring that to your attention due to some earlier questions you asked this evening on other projects. I'd also like to emphasize that we're currently pursuing a Lomar to bring all lots out of the floodplain, and as you recently discussed, that spur trail, and we're sticking with the city's regional trail and trying to implement that throughout the site. So I'm open for any questions you guys might have about the project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody has of Julie?
All right, thank you very much.
It's good to hear that actually somebody's going to build on it, though.
Oh, yes. We're moving forward at a quick pace.
LGI is over there off of Pierrot, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, they are, North Pierrot. They're almost done, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Any other public comment? All right, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.209.2. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located north of Cortson Road and Casa Grande Avenue between Pinal Avenue and Treco Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1178.209.2 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
It's me again. The, uh, I just, I just really have an issue with the density we're getting in our community. A lot of people don't like it, think there's too much of it. And these are rentals, and a lot of times, they're more transitory as far as people that come in and live there and leave and don't plant trees or don't do anything else. And I know this is a dream for developers because you can put a couple more lots in there this way, but I'd love to see somebody go back, honestly, to the PAD system and build some good quality homes in Casa Grande. Thank you.
Your vote, it's your vote.
Well, my vote is no.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item L seven. This is an amending, amending zone ordinance number 1178. From a plan PAD to a R two development.
Mayor, I've also combined the next item.
Item L seven and L eight?
L eight, yes.
Okay.
The first request is for DSA 2100196, zone change from McCartney Ranch two planned area development to R two on approximately 282 acres. And DSA 2100204, PAD amendment to change the current 36 acres to 19 acres to include mixed use for both commercial and multifamily. So the current PAD allows for 708 lots at a density of 3.7 dwelling units per acre. However, in the current PAD, there is a unique product located on the east side of Pinal on 23 acres that would allow for development of four to eight dwelling units per acre, and that would equal additional 188 lots in this location. The proposed R two is for 992 lots at a density of 3.52 dwelling units per acre. And as this project came online, staff did work with the applicant and developers to maintain larger lots within parcels six and eight. This is adjacent to the Cardi Ranch and Cornerstone neighborhoods, and includes additional conditions of records for side yard setbacks to be five feet and 10 feet, and the southernmost lots to be one story at 25 feet. And this is what both Cornerstone and Cardi Ranch has for their height restrictions. Again, looking at the PAD to R two, as noted previously, staff wants to ensure that the design, the resulting product has the same design elements and quality as a traditional PAD. So staff is recommending conditions of records associated with this, as well as the additional conditions associated with parcel six and eight. I also wanted to note that the R two open space is 10% again, and the PAD is 15%. And planning commission did recommend 20%. And then the, also adding that no more than 1,270 dwelling units may be constructed, and this would allow for the maximum density of 4.5. However, again, as noted, the density is at 3.52 dwelling units per acre and for 992 homes. And the post-pre-plat that is currently in review ranges from 5,400 square feet to 9,750 square feet. And looking at the open space, the open space proposed was at 20.9%. And again, as this, uh, as looking at the regional trail system, the master plan showed the highlighted area here, sorry, as a community trail. And in the original PAD, it was stipulated that the developer should try to work with Kinder Morgan. So as this project came back online, talks with Kinder Morgan began between the developer and the city. However, it was determined that this was not going to be allowed by Kinder Morgan. However, the developer has proposed a trail that will continue to connect Treco and Pinal throughout the development, and that is shown in the blue outlined in this area. Again, looking at the zone change review criteria through the general plan, this is outlined in additional detail in the staff report, and staff finds that it meets this requirement. And again, looking at the new state law that requires cities to look at the, impacts on affordable housing, and again, this, we feel that even though it is an increase from the R two, it does allow for additional lots than the planned area development and would keep housing costs down. Regarding the PAD amendment, this PAD amendment is to change the current 36 acres located at the southeast corner of Pinal and McCartney to include both commercial and multifamily. Looking at the PAD review criteria, staff again finds that it has been met. The, all the design requirements will be looked at in the major site plan when that comes. That has not been submitted yet.
But it is a combination of multifamily and commercial?
We believe so. It hasn't, that hasn't, they're just looking to add both, just to keep options open. Regarding notifications, a neighborhood meeting, staff did hold a neighborhood meeting at McCartney Ranch over the summer. Approximately 15 people attended. Inquiries from residents from Cardi Ranch and Cornerstone really was regarding the southern lots and their lot sizes and height. They were happy with the larger lots as well as the height restrictions. I did receive one email prior to planning commission regarding the density, and I described to her what was in the staff report, and I did not receive any other inquiries. Since the November Planning Commission, I did receive an email regarding the PAD amendment request asking about multifamily, what that means, and I haven't received any other comments. Regarding next steps, the zone change, if the zone change is approved by city council, planning commission will hear the preliminary plat in upcoming scheduled meeting. Council will consider the final plat at another upcoming meeting. And then the site development final plat landscape plan will be completed administratively, and housing product semitole will be considered administratively as well. And for the PAD amendment, if it's approved by city council, the major site plan application will be approved by planning commission. So with that, planning commission forward a favorable recommendation to city council for DSA 2100193, zone change from McCartney Ranch two PAD to R two with conditions of record as described in zoning ordinance.
Mr. Lavender?
Jaclyn, could you go back to the first one right there?
Yes.
Is there any agreement to expand Treco from two lanes to four as part of this agreement? Or when this is complete, is Treco going to be locked in as a two-way lane road in front of a high school that's going to grow to 3,000 students?
Eventually go out to Val Vista.
Yeah, but if you've been there in the morning, it backs all the way up to Rodeo and McCartney. You can't add this kind of traffic there, especially as the high school's going to double in population.
This, this development will enlarge Treco for additional two through lanes. So they will be adding another, another, let's see, is it one or two? Two, yeah. So I believe they're going to add additional two through lanes to Treco. They're going to add additional lanes to McCartney as well. So that, and that channel will have to be moved a little bit, too, that drainage channel.
The drainage channel.
On the corner.
What comes right out of the side?
Impact study is going to be done before all of this is, or has it already been done?
I think we already have one.
It is, yeah. It's currently in review with the preliminary plat.
Mr. Powell?
Just, Paul, just a question. When will we begin to extend Treco out to Val Vista? How far in the future is that?
So that's a good question. It may, you know, an item yet to be heard tonight actually will involve Treco extension to Val Vista, but not down to McCartney because that's through Vilago, and so the short answer is when Vilago develops adjacent to it, that's typically when you would see Treco extended to McCartney. But there will be a section of Treco extended to Val Vista with another project that you're going to hear in a few minutes.
We'll have that conversation when the next one comes up.
Yes.
Any other questions? Matt?
Yeah, I've heard about this. I was a little disappointed about El Paso and Kinder Morgan not helping with our, our community trail system, but I'd like to thank the developer for picking that up and putting that trail system through there because that's a natural trail, is the pipeline. But anyway, I'd like to thank him for that. And if Jaclyn, you could go back to like the lot breakdown. It looks like somewhere 9,000, one more up from where, no, no, the other way.
Oh.
One after, yeah, right there. So there's actually no 5,000 square foot lots in this, in the proposed pre-plat. So it's 5,400 all the way up to 9,700.
Correct.
So that's, that's a good mix, and like, like to see that, what we've been talking about a lot. So it's good to get something like that in front of us and to go both ways, to give a lot of housing scale, so.
And that, and that, that's a 300-foot barrier between this development and County Ranch. It's a, it's a big right away. So that's, that's a lot of room right there. Anyway, okay. Any other questions? Yeah, I'm sorry, Bo.
That's all right. This, this road that exits out onto Pinal Avenue, it doesn't look like that matches up with Palm Avenue. It, will there be any further discussion about whether or not that needs to match up? And whether that, whether or not that should be a controlled intersection at some point?
I think it's too close.
It is being reviewed by ADOT through the TIA, so.
Okay.
That will be, the alignment will be further evaluated during the preliminary plat.
Just an observation, the Palm Avenue onto Pinal is a bit dicey right now. People pull out into the median to queue up for a turn north onto Pinal. And if, if we have that situation times two, I think that would, would be a bad plan. But anyways, just a, just a comment at this point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll start with L seven first. This is the amending the zoning ordinance first. Is there anybody here who would like to address council on item L seven? Good evening. Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lindell with Cohen Van Luke Consultants. And good evening to all of you, mayor and council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on this project. Couple of items that had been discussed on other projects prior to this that I'd like to call attention to. This particular project, our client, Garrett Development, has two letters of intent from large publicly held home building companies. So we are aggressively moving forward with those, excuse me, those two builders for this project. I'd also like to thank you for pointing out the fact that we have a big variety of lot sizes, five different lot sizes. So we feel that this project will cater to a very broad base of home buyers and, and give the city something that they need. Let's see, and then lastly, there was mentioned that this particular property has the ability, but we're not pursuing that ability to have more density than it currently shows. That's kind of rare in the development community to have a client like ours who wants to do something like we're doing here, and I just wanted to mention that. Lastly, I'd like to thank Paul and Jaclyn for your help and your guidance through this process and for your presentation this evening, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I do have one while you're standing up here on the PAD. Any, can you give us any idea on what potential plans are there? Or are you just still in the figuring it out stage?
It is in the figuring out stage. There is no letter of intent that I'm aware of. However, our client is talking to a developer that builds, constructs for rent housing for at least a portion of that property, if not the entirety of that property. And then I had heard early on, it's been a couple of weeks now, but there was talk about a commercial developer as well.
Like, it'd be nice to see some business development on that section, too. So just send back our, my thoughts.
I will do so.
I'm not speaking for the council, I'm speaking for me.
Very good.
I agree.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
You bragging again, Mayor.
No, no, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Again, this is a public hearing, and we're on L seven. All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.247.1. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located at the southwest corner of McCartney Road and Treco Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.247.1 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
I have a question. The, on these multifamily homes, are there three families in those? Or how does that work? How's the density working out?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
It really depends on the developer. The one that we're currently contemplating, the homes are single, like a detached home, like a townhome, a fairly small townhome. And then there are duplexes, but each of the homes themselves is intended for the occupancy of one family. So two-bedroom, three-bedroom of that sort. And it's probably worth noting that all of the homes that are currently being built by this particular developer are single-story.
Yeah, and that's on the PAD, which is actually the next item. So, okay, thank you. And you haven't finalized that yet either, so, okay. All right, so any other?
We need a vote?
Yeah, we need a vote. Mr. Powell, are you going to vote yes or no on L seven?
On L seven, I'm going to vote no again, but I'm really sad to see so many people getting away from our PAD system, which worked beautifully for years, created some of the best neighborhoods we have in Casa Grande, and they're still being lived in and enjoyed, and going to a multifamily with everything, going from R two. So I'm going to vote no again.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next, next public hearing is L eight, which we've heard the details on. This is, again, the PAD amendment. So this is on that northeast or northwest corner of this property, which, which has not been finalized. It's just establishing the PAD, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I'll open the public hearing. This is again on L eight. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to council on this particular item, item L eight? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.247.2. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to McCartney Ranch two planned area approving a major amendment to McCartney Ranch 2 planned area development adopted for property generally located at the southeast corner of Pinal Avenue and McCartney Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.247.2 as presented.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Okay. On S McCartney Ranch 2 PAD amendment narrative, yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. The next item on our agenda is L9. This is also a public hearing, but we'll hear about the rezoning from PAD to R2.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, this is another request similar to the ones that you've heard this evening for the Villa Arroyo PAD to R2. The location of the Villa Arroyo PAD is about a quarter-mile south of Val Vista Boulevard on the east side of the future Trekkle Road. Currently, it's a 240-acre Planned Area Development Zone District. About 29 acres of that 240-acre PAD is currently designated for multifamily land use at 16 dwelling units per acre. And the remnant of that area, or the 211-acre portion of that area, is currently designated for single-family residential land use. And that's actually the area proposed to go to R2. The 29-acre area for multifamily is going to remain as PAD. Currently, within that 211-acre area designated for single-family residential use, the PAD allows for 723 home sites at a density of 3.42 dwelling units per acre. There's a request by EPS Group to change that 211-acre area from PAD to R2. And as you see on the right, um, it would allow for an increase to 951 total lots maximum at 4.5 dwelling units per acre. I should note, however, that we do have a preliminary plat under review where they're proposing a variety of different lot sizes and lot widths ranging from 5,175 square feet to 6,900 square feet. As a PAD, as it currently exists, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet with a minimum lot width of 55. The minimum required side setbacks in this PAD is five feet on one side, 10 feet on the other. And following the PAD residential design standards, for every lot less than 7,000 square feet and equal number of lots, 8,000 square feet and over have to be provided. Proposed as R2, however, um, there's less restrictive standards. Um, the minimum lot size required would be 5,000, minimum lot width would be 45 feet, minimum side setbacks are five and five. And there would be the maximum density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. We are recommending, as has Planning Commission when they heard this, are recommending, um, certain conditions of record to help preserve the benefits of PAD zones, um, but in the form of, of as an R2-zone district. And that would include the requirement for housing product. Um, that would be administratively approvable, however. Planning Commission did make a recommendation for Villa Arroyo to provide a minimum open space of 20%. Um, as an R2-zone, typically, the minimum amount of landscaping would be 10%. As a PAD zone, the minimum amount is 15. This condition of record to up the amount of open space to a minimum of 20% is due to the fact that they're increasing the density within that area. So, there's a relationship to more homes, more open space. There's some other conditions of record, such as the requirement for front yard landscaping detail and themed perimeter fencing detail. And of course, there would be a requirement for an HOA or special maintenance district. And then also, a condition of record would restrict multifamily development in that R2 area. Regarding the conversation on the open space, um, currently, the conceptual landscape plan that was provided with the preliminary plat shows about 16% open space, about 33.45 acres. As I mentioned, Planning Commission is recommending a 20% minimum. So, so there would be ultimately some additional acreage there that would need to be provided in the pre-plat for open space. Regarding zone changes, the city code basically requires that zone changes follow three criteria regarding consistency with the city's general plan. Staff and Planning Commission considered these review criteria and found that these three review criteria have been met. Regarding the public notification process, this met, if not exceeded, that which is required by city code. Um, there were no comments as a result of the public notification efforts. I do want to call attention to the fact, as has Joe and Jaclyn in their presentations, that there was recently passed state legislation that, that just calls attention to the fact that when hearing zone changes, affordability must be considered. Staff and Planning Commission did feel, typo there, that this rezone would promote affordability. Regarding the next steps, should city council approve of the zone change? Um, the next step for the applicant would be to submit, um, or to follow through with the pre-plat that's currently under review. Um, it would ultimately go to Planning Commission and it would be scheduled at an upcoming meeting. And then, um, the next part of the process would be for the applicant to, to submit site development plans, final landscaping plan and public improvement permits, um, along with the final plat, which would be considered by city council. And then ultimately, there would be a housing product submittal that would be considered administratively. At a vote of six to zero, Planning Commission voted to forward to city council a recommendation to approve this zone change, um, subject to the conditions as presented and as stated in ordinance number 1178.280.1. And that concludes my presentation for Villa Arroyo.
Mr. Powell?
Question, the multi, uh, multifamily homes, R2 homes, are they single-family, double-family, triple-family? How do, how do they fit?
So, what this, um, zone change would accomplish is single-family residential development, because we are recommending, as has Planning Commission, that multifamily development would be prohibited.
No multifamily.
There is a remnant of the PAD that I'll show you here that will stay multifamily. So, that's not changing as part of this request.
God bless them. Wait, is it all R2?
This is R2.
All of it?
This is PAD.
It's multifamily land use.
Bob?
James, just curiosity. What is that diagonal barrier that seems to separate the lot and continue on?
It's a gas line.
Is it a gas line?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, uh, the mayor's correct. It's the, that gas line.
Okay.
Well, so, all right. And I know I've talked to Mr. Willis about this, but, um, in terms of Trekkle Road, this gets built, access for this community to get down into, into town is, at best, difficult, because they're going to have to go up to Val Vista around and then all the way back into Casa Grande. So, at some point in time, obviously, I mean, the problem with Vilago is right now they don't have any water.
Not close, it is.
So, that, that section's not going to probably happen, at least in the near future. I think it will at some point in time. But how do we get that Trekkle down to McCartney?
So, Mr. Mayor, um, let me first say that as a normal requirement of the city code, this development will have to build that section of Trekkle adjacent to their frontage.
To Val Vista.
Well, yes, um, along their frontage. They will, of course, have to do an off-site extension from their frontage up to Val Vista, which is through the, um, southwest community's property. I've discussed with the developer the, uh, ability for us to grant traffic impact fee offsets for the off-site improvement from their north boundary up to Val Vista. So, they would improve that, uh, because normally that would be the requirement of the adjacent development. But this developer would build it, we'd give them traffic impact, impact fee offsets. You know, um, you know, I guess if you were to impose the requirement for Trekkle to be extended from their south boundary down to McCartney, um, you know, a couple of issues. One, southwest communities would have to grant the right for that road to be built, the right-of-way dedication. Two, we could also grant traffic impact fee offsets for that off-site extension as well to compensate the developer for building that.
Well, it would seem, it would seem to me that at the time of this development, that it would be financially more prudent to do it all at once. Uh, again, using impact fees or, uh, developing it, you know, from our perspective and then collecting, you know, the fees later when that land gets developed, instead of waiting to have it built.
Is Trekkle Road functional along the western boundary?
No, no.
It's, it's, it's a dirt road, but we don't encourage people...
I've driven that dirt road a lot of times.
We don't encourage people to drive on it, no.
Yeah, no. I, I'm just trying to think, we're just trying to anticipate, because this really is kind of by itself.
Yeah. Right. You know, there's three ways that Trekkle gets built through here. One is we wait till southwest communities develops their property on both sides, on either side, and build it. Uh, at that point, we program it as a city CIP or we require this developer to build it and we grant in, traffic impact fee offsets. I think maybe, I don't know if the city manager wants to offer anything else on that topic.
County help, maybe? Larry?
I was actually just speaking with Mr. Lewis just a second ago about some of the discussions that we were having today. What I learned is that, uh, the county is working on Trekkle, but it's on the southern part of our city. And so, um, we can certainly engage different groups and look for alternatives. I, Mr. Tice outlined what I consider to be some of the alternatives for improvements. And obviously, uh, depending on the type of traffic and the timing of the development, the city could certainly look at the potential of it being part of our capital improvement program as well to, to, uh, to complete the area north of McCartney Road. So, it's, again, I think a lot of this would be dependent on the timing of when development would occur.
I just think, I just think as we grow, and this is going to be a pretty congested area down south, that it gives us another north-south corridor.
Kind of jumps.
You know, versus, versus everybody going up Pinal. Meaning residential could now go up Trekkle versus, you know, the commercial that's using Pinal right now. Just, I'm just throwing it out there. I just think we need to make sure we look at all of our opportunities. And if Mr. Willis's group is willing to help us on this, then, you know, I, I want to try and, try and see what we can do. Maybe the, you know, the other folks who have the other land would be, they might be interested in participating as well. So, if there's a, you know, private-public partnership that we could do this with, then I want to make sure we look at that. So, anyway, just a point of, point of, uh, record on that, please. Mr. Powell?
On those dirt roads, those people that they're still using stagecoach just complain, Mayor.
I'll bet. I've been on that road. It's not very good. Anybody else have any, yes?
Um, James, can you clarify, uh, when you talked about the housing product? What, what does that mean exactly?
Mr. Mayor, it's Councilmember McBride. So, typically, in properties, on properties that are zoned PAD and, and they're residentially designated, the home builder is required to submit what's known as housing product. It's basically design review. And there's a specific number of floor plans that they're required to provide, with a minimum number of color schemes and architectural finishes.
Okay.
And, um, Planning Commission would normally be the entity to review that. Because this isn't a PAD, it's an R2, um, we're recommending a condition of record that would obligate them to engage in a similar process, except that instead of it going to Planning Commission for consideration, it would just be reviewed administratively, so long as it meets all of those requirements that would typically be considered at the time of the housing products bill.
Okay. Thank you. And my only other comment is that I noticed the setback was five foot by five foot. I'm a little concerned about that. Not a deal breaker, but I know that that has been an issue in other, um, other areas. So, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. This is a public hearing, so this is a public hearing for L9. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Mr. Willis?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, thank you for allowing me a moment to visit with you tonight. I'm Dale Willis with Willis Property Company in Mesa. Uh, been engaged with this property for many years. And, um, this past week, uh, well, first of all, I want to thank James and Paul for their help, uh, the past number of months as we've put together this particular plan, as well as in the past. So, thank you. Um, this past week, I met with Mike Hearn of Community Southwest and discussed the Trekkle Road situation after our meeting, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, his main focus, as you've already stated here tonight, is water, water, water within Vilago. And, uh, he said the Trekkle aspect, he would be willing to work with us, but to come up with any type of financial commitments, he's not willing to do that right now, because those are later phases for him. So, I think on the Trekkle roadside, we're willing to work, uh, with you, with the county, uh, and with others with that. Um, maybe a particular solution in order to get it, uh, from McCartney up to Val Vista is, uh, maybe go to a two-lane to begin with and then widen it as development happens, uh, is another thought process, too. Granted, along our frontage, we would widen it to the city specifications, but that's just another thought process. Mr. Hearn was not, uh, very committal on granting the right-of-way, the extra 32 feet on each side of Trekkle. But, you know, those, those discussions will continue to mature and, and be had in the coming months and hopefully not years ahead, but hopefully months ahead. So, but, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. But, uh, but thank you for taking a moment to review this case tonight.
Thank you, Dale. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Willis? Thank you. Thanks for trying to work that out. Appreciate it. Thanks for trying to work that out, appreciate it. Could always do a chip seal, Larry. He's looking at me like, eh. All right, any other public comment? This is on L-9. All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.280.1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 in its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located southeast of Val Vista Boulevard and Trekkle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.280.1 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yeah, Willis feels good to home, so I'm going to vote yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item L-10, which is also a public hearing, and this is amending a zoning ordinance, 1178, from P-AD to R-2. Mr. Gaglari, are you on this one?
Yes, I am. Just waiting for the presentation to get loaded up on the screen here. So, this is a request from P-AD to R-2. Belavista is currently a 78 and 1/2 acre planned area development zone district located at the northwest corner of Quartzon Road and Peert Road. Currently, 54 acres of that 78 and 1/2 acre P-AD is designated for single-family residential land use at four dwelling units per acre. That would yield about 216 dwellings. There is a 20-acre portion of the P-AD currently designated for multifamily residential, and a 4 and 1/2 acre area of the P-AD designated for commercial that is not proposed for this zone change. Those are remaining intact. In fact, currently, if you drive by the corner of Peert and Quartzon, you'll see the Dollar General under construction. That's located within the commercial portion of the Belavista P-AD. So, the request is basically taking that area currently designated for single-family, which currently allows 216 dwellings at four dwelling units per acre, and it's rezoning it to R-2, but specifically for single-family residential development, which would yield a maximum of 242 dwellings at 4 and 1/2 dwelling units per acre. When comparing the P-AD residential design standards to the R-2, you'll see that the R-2 is a little bit more accommodating in terms of allowing an increase in the number of lots. It allows for a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, along with a little bit of less restrictive development standards. Ultimately, however, in order to remain in compliance with the general plan and specifically the neighborhood's land use, they would have a maximum of 4.5 dwelling units per acre, which comes to about 242 home sites. Staff is, as well as Planning Commission, recommending specific conditions of record, similar to my last presentation with regard to the requirement for housing product. The minimum open space would be up to 20%. Ignore the 15 on the screen there. And then, also, like with the others, they would be subject to either an HOA or a special maintenance district, and then multifamily development would be prohibited. With regard to the open space requirement, I do want to point out that there is a regional trail that is currently under construction, just north of the Belavista site. It's the leg from Peert to Trekkle that's part of the Santa Cruz Linear Trail, and part of this, Belavista's development, their open space will probably be abutting that trail, because that's a low point, it's near the Wash. So, staff feels that that can easily be accommodated towards the, primarily towards the north end of the Belavista site, where there'll be connections to that regional When reviewing zone changes, there's three criteria that have to be evaluated. Both staff and Planning Commission did take these three criteria into consideration, and we found that these three criteria have been met. Regarding the public notification process, it did meet that which is required by city code. There were no comments provided as a result of the public notification. I do want to clarify, too, that unlike the other requests that you heard this evening, there's yet to be a preliminary plat submitted for this. So, regarding the next steps, ultimately, Planning Commission would hear a preliminary plat, and like with the others, should the city council approve of the zone change, the next step for the applicant would be to submit the site development plan, final landscape plan, public improvement permits, and then council would ultimately consider a final plat, and then the housing product would be submitted and considered administratively. As with what I discussed with the previous request, due to recently passed state legislation, affordability must be a consideration when hearing zone changes. Planning Commission and staff contend that this R-2 zoning would positively affect affordability, because it would allow an increase in the number of single-family homes within the same acreage as if it were to be a P-AD zone. With a vote of 6-0, Planning Commission recommended to forward to city council a recommendation to approve this zone change from P-AD to R-2, subject to conditions stated in this presentation and within the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Gaglari, at the time that this is, the final plat is issued, and if they have a buyer that's going to start building homes, would we at that point in time then require Colorado to be built?
Mr. Mayor, correct. One of the conditions of record actually is part of the ordinance is that there would be the requirement for right-of-way dedication, including Colorado Street.
Okay, and then, can we also, is there a possibility to include the trail system south down Colorado to our rec center?
It's not off the table. The P-AD zone that's on the west side of the Colorado alignment actually had called for a spur trail segment, but there is some sense to putting it on the east side, because it would be that much closer and it would align more properly with where the rec center is.
Because we have a trail coming out the back of the rec center.
Right.
That goes to Colorado. And so, the natural connection up to the Wash would be up Colorado. I think it would be up Peert, because it's too busy a road, and it would be safer up Colorado. Just, I'm throwing it out there, just make sure you keep it in the back of your mind as we kind of move forward on this. I want to make sure we're building this trail system, and so, we've been sitting on our hands, I know we don't, not sitting on our hands, that's a bad statement, I apologize. But, you know, we had that downturn, and we just weren't doing anything with the trail system, and I really want to push the trails. So, in any opportunity we have to connect all these communities, let's connect them. Anybody else have any comments, Matt?
Kind of along that line, I actually met with Jim a while back, and he's a big proponent of trails, by the way, and he knows a lot about trail systems, so I think he's the right guy to get this.
All right. Well, good, I'm counting on you, Jim.
I'm in your court, for sure.
And the other thing is, you know, like you said, we hadn't done it for a while, but now that we have all this development, we're getting the participation of all the developers to build the trails, so we don't have to put all the money out front, and I like the trend of that, so.
Yes, me too. I like to see us connected. Anybody else? Okay, it's a public hearing, so this is L-10, so I'll open the floor to the public hearing on item L-10. Is there anyone here who is here to speak on behalf or against? This is yours, too?
This is line two, sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
Dale Willis, Willis Property Company, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
You're going to put that trail in for me, right, Dale?
Let's discuss it a little bit more. Maybe we can put it on the Claps property, just to the west of us.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Willis?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, then I'll close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.229.2. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 in its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located north of Quartzon Road and west of Peert Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.229.2 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
I'm just looking at this, and everything we've done tonight has canceled out P-AD and gone to R-2, and they say we're getting an awful lot of R-2 in our community, so I don't know how the people are going to react to it, but I'm going to vote no.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, that is the conclusion of most of tonight's meeting, and the remaining item is our reports. So, I'll start over with you, Donna.
Oh, just a couple real quick things, Public Safety Dinner is this Saturday night. I know Steve Hardisty was here earlier. Anybody that went out to the parade and the activities on Saturday, over 100 volunteers and staff were out there, just phenomenal job. And then also, I just wanted to mention, congratulations to my friend, Mr. Herman, business hours, he was recognized as our favorite council person, and we love him, too, so congratulations.
Thanks, Donna.
That's it.
Matt?
Thanks. It's a big weekend in the city of Casa Grande. The Cougars won, are going to state.
Yay.
So, we're very excited about that. I know Lisa will say that, too. We want to thank APS for sponsoring our electric light parade again, and a neat thing that happened this year with Community Services in downtown is they transitioned from the park area to downtown, and I went to the park, they had awesome setup, and there were so many people there, and I got stopped by people saying how great the new setup was. So, they loved it, and the grass was beautiful, and then the lights in the park and the new ones at City Hall are fantastic, I've gotten a lot of compliments on those as well. So, I want to, is he still here?
He's hiding back there.
There he is. So, your department, Steve, thank you very much.
Yeah, good job, Steve.
Yeah, the lights are awesome. And then, yesterday was the 35th Annual Toy Parade, a lot of the work by Dennis and Judy Byss, we want to thank them for doing that and hosting the motorcycle run. And also, last night, we had the very first Casa Grande menorah lighting, and probably the first in Panal County, and there was probably about 100 people here, and it was great. Some new, different culture in our city, and it was a lot of fun. They had latkes, donuts, and lit the menorah, but we did not dance the hora, Michael, I was a little... So, but, yeah, there were...
And your Hebrew is pretty good.
Yeah. And so, it was a really neat thing to see, and a great, great new thing for our community, so it was a lot of fun. And that concludes this weekend, so, and I helped the youth commission all day to get their float, and they heeded my advice, more lights, more duct tape, and it always works in the end.
And your truck looked good in the parade, too.
Thank you, I washed it.
Bob?
Mayor, again, thank you for my plaque, for serving as Mayor Pro Tem. I will say that you do such a good job of managing, maybe sometimes juggling, your schedule. There wasn't a whole lot for me to do, but I thoroughly enjoyed it, so thank you, thank you for the plaque. I'm sure Mr. Powell will do an excellent job. And also, on a sad note, we had a longtime businessman in town that was also a former council member, Frank Mejia, passed away late last week, and I wanted to publicly thank his family for his service to the city and give them our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Well, Brett, I'm going to probably have to file a complaint, maybe sue. I've got to hurry up.
Workman's complaint.
We told him this isn't heavy, but he's not dumb, right, Tim?
He didn't bring us to the city, huh, Donna? I'm sorry.
We told you this wasn't that heavy.
That's right.
All right, Lisa?
You know, I just want to compliment the Cougars again. You know, I just want to tell everyone that's watching, you know, to get out and support the Casa Grande Cougars. It's just such an exciting thing that's going on for our community with this team and the coaches, and, you know, I went to the game Friday, and just the energy and, you know, people coming back, alumni from years and years, and the excitement, so I'm just so proud of the team and the coaches and all the staff, so I'm really hoping people get out there and go to the game. ASU, it's at ASU, 4 o'clock, Friday. Unfortunately, I have a wedding that I have to go to, but I'll be watching, but really, I'm just so thrilled for the Casa Grande Cougars, a proud alumni.
Well done.
And then, yes, the electric light parade, again, so exciting to see, so exciting to see everyone out, it's just amazing how many people were out on the street, and see, again, the staff did wonderful, it is just a great event, the weather was perfect. I, of course, had my favorite float, but I'm not going to say which one that was, it looks like they won one of the prizes, but really good. And then, Mayor, I wanted to compliment your group, Panal 40, went to that dinner last weekend, I guess it was, and what a great event. I mean, the amount of money that you all have raised for our community and our youth is just amazing, and so I was just impressed, it was a great evening, I know you guys work so hard, I think you need a couple women on there, but, you know, but it's okay.
I agree with you.
But a great event, I mean, I always enjoy going, and it's so nice to be able to go to some of these events again, you know, with COVID, and, you know, it's just, it's been a tough year and a half, but it's so nice to see people get back out and supporting the community. And as I've been out and about, you know, I have noticed, the chief is, he's still here, the chief, I've noticed the officers with their body cams, and it just makes me so happy. And not only me, it's the community. People have called me, a gentleman that is constantly complaining about our police department, not complaining, but has some issues, right away, when he found those body cams on, was so thrilled, and so I was happy to tell him that it's something that we're happy to bring. So, and I talked to a couple of the officers and just kind of asked how So, and I talked to a couple of the officers and just kind of asked how they're doing, and they all seemed pretty, you know, positive and supportive and, of course, learning the procedures and everything, but I'm just so happy to see those body cams that are officers. So, thank you for everything you're doing to executing that. And just quickly, I know I'm the dog lover here, but, you know, I just want to tell people, it seems like there's so many dogs that are roaming our streets, and I actually found one the other day and picked it up. No tag, no chip, no nothing. So, reported it to Animal Control, Valley Humane, and two and a half weeks later, I still have the dog. No one has looked for this dog, and so I adopted another dog. So, but I'm just, you know, I just ask people to get your dog chipped, you know, put a tag on your dog, you know. Animal Control is so busy. Valley Humane Society is, they have no room. They do such a great job out there, but they have no room in their shelters, so they were happy when I told them I would hang on to this dog. I thought someone was going to claim him, but they didn't, but it's a beautiful dog. But I'm just asking people to please, you know, just put a chip or a name tag, and there's a place to drop a dog. Don't leave it on the street. This dog was probably on the street for a while, so that's it for me.
Thanks, Lisa. Mr. Lavender?
Well, I did want to, it was so enjoyable to go out Saturday night and enjoy the parade after missing it last year. It was a total team effort, Steve. Your department did a great job planning it. Public Works did a great job cleaning up and getting set up. The fire and police department were out there. It was great to see the drone out there as well. People who watched it on TV enjoyed watching it as well. It was just a wonderful evening, although I thought the Eloy Fire Department's float stole the evening.
Oh, yeah.
So, congratulations to them as well. But Lisa talked, Matt talked about the football team. For somebody that watched the 31-game losing streak and the years there, that program turned around when Randy Robbins was appointed athletic director there. He is somebody who bleeds blue and yellow. He passed over a lot of qualified candidates who had been head coaches for an unproven commodity, and Jake Borrow, he understood that Jake was going to build that program. When Jake was hired, one of the first things he did is he came and met with the middle school principals, talked about how he wanted to build the program from within. He wanted to spread offense, which is very popular with kids, and he has just built that program and worked so hard, so Randy and Jake, and also there are a lot of former Vilago students on that team, and Vilago is also an undefeated football team that's playing for their championship on Thursday, as well as our soccer team, which the mayor's granddaughter is one of our star players. A lot of exciting things going on in our community right now, so, but thank you.
All right. You stole that one from me, so thanks. I was going to compliment the Vilago flag football team and the soccer team, so they're actually both undefeated, which is...
As well as the cross-country team.
Yeah, and so the championship's this Thursday, right?
Yes, sir.
Is it like 4:00?
4:30.
And then they play in at Vilago?
Yes. Everything's just Vilago.
So, come out to Vilago and check out your championship middle school teams.
Thursday?
This Thursday.
Cool.
Yep. Unfortunately, I'll be hearing about it post, since I'm going to be out of town. But just wanted to really give a shout out for the whole community coming out for the Electric Light Parade. It was really fantastic. It was great to see everybody out there. We had a lot of new decorations. Pierc Park looks amazing, and everybody really did, I thought, did a great job with all the floats. And I know probably on the 20th, we'll be announcing, I'm hoping we'll be able to announce winners.
They announced it, they did.
Yeah, it is.
The winners are out.
Oh, but we have plaques we can hand out.
Yeah.
So, we can do it here at, publicly, right? Don't we do that? Can't we do that?
You're the mayor.
Have people come to City Council for their winning plaques?
I've got one of those. Twenty and C. I believe so.
Yeah, there you go. 20th, next city council, so be here, be square. And then, just, you know, a big shout out, we had 65-plus floats that were in the parade, so it was really great, great turnout. The menorah lighting, the celebration of lights was great. I know, Matt, thanks for helping support there, too. So, we had a great turnout, and really, it was a nice festival event, and I really had a great time. So, they, that's the first one in Pinal County. That's my understanding, and so it was really a lot of fun, and it was good to see. You know, the one thing that I mentioned, too, at the event was that this community of Casa Grande has the most churches I've ever seen, but they all get along and they all work together, and it's really, really refreshing to see that and see how the camaraderie between the different churches works so well. I mean, even the LDS and the Catholic Church and the Jewish community, so it's really quite a cross-section of different religions, Baptists, all of it. So, and they all get along, so it's really a great ministry that's here in the city. We got a chance to meet with Neil Carter. Neil, thanks for coming tonight, our legislator in LD8, and also with Teresa Martinez last week. Larry and I met with both of them. We talked to them about kind of directionally what's happening in Casa Grande. We also talked to them about things that we might be concerned about at the legislature and set up some communication, direct communication with both of them so that we can have a better relationship, make sure that, you know, we help them and they help us. So, it's a good relationship, and I think it's off to a good start, so thank you for coming down today, Neil. And then, we did set up the charter committee. I think we're going to bring that to council on the, oh, we're not supposed to talk about it because we're going to vote on it.
Just a reminder that when we do reports, we're not supposed to talk about items that we will be bringing to the next council meeting.
I just realized that as I was saying it, so I apologize. Anyway, we're working on the charter committee, and you'll see more. Why can't I do that? Can't even do that? We're working on it? Anyway, you're going to see more on it. Jeez, you're a, oh, thanks. All right.
He's a tough one.
Yeah, I know. Sorry. All right, that's probably enough. Keep an eye out, though, we will be, the PIO will be putting out some information on new vaccination sites and testing sites that we're going to prop up here in the city. Some of it'll be at our, at the Dorothy Powell Center, some of it'll be some other locations, it'll be around the city, but keep an eye out on our website because you will, you will see that. So, that and be safe. Be careful out there. Pardon me?
Well, I don't want you to upstage me.
If you like, I'll just...
Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
I just wanted to share a quote I've seen is that of all the creatures that God created, there's none that can love a human like a dog.
I know, right?
And they just, they just come to you, they have a, and so...
All right. Meeting adjourned.